I go ahead and call the city council meeting to order. He's going. Mary Jo, can you please call the roll?
Kathy Pucci?
Here.
Erin Barowski?
Absent excuse.
Kevin Tansky?
Here.
Sue Grodick?
Here.
Meg Ryan Shaki?
Here.
Stephen Coyle?
Here.
Andy Selhards?
Here.
If you could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and moral power.
Tonight, I'm requesting a brief moment of silence in recognition of Teen Dating Abuse Awareness and Prevention Month, which occurs every February. Thank you. I start off this evening with minutes of approval. We have first up the January 3 organizational meeting. Does anyone have counsel questions, comments?
To approve: Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Sue Grodick?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki?
Yes.
Stephen Coyle?
Yes.
Andy Selhards?
Yes.
January 9 council meeting minutes? Make a motion to approve?
Second.
To approve: Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Sue Grodick?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki?
Yes.
Stephen Coyle?
Yes.
Andy Selhards?
Yes.
January 17, the special council meeting?
To approve.
Second.
To approve: Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Sue Grodick?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki?
Yes.
Stephen Coyle?
Yes.
Andy Selhards?
Yes.
And finally, the January 18 special council meeting?
To approve.
Second.
To approve: Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Sue Grodick?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki?
Yes.
Stephen Coyle? Andy Selhards?
Yes.
Next up, we have the public session. If anyone has anything to say for the good and welfare of the city of Brooklyn, please step forward, give your name and address, and you will be recognized. Please limit your time to five minutes or less.
Rob Slattery, 6600 Bezos Drive. On January 3, the safety director met with a few of his workers and berated them, called them foul names. Later, the same day, the safety, or the service director called a meeting of all of his workers and again berated the workers using extremely foul language and belittling them. A worker had the courage to report this. There is some serious problems here. First off is that John Verba thinks he can act that way. Let me remind you that Verba also verbally abused two councilwomen after a council meeting. Verba confronted them outside City Hall, yelled so loud at them that someone at the rec center called the police department, and a police report was made. Yet, nothing was done to John Verba. I have a question. Why didn't Human Resources person call the mayor about this serious complaint? Why did the mayor find out about this from me? I think that's embarrassing and a flaw in the system. Why did it take so many days after it was reported? A few days later, I spoke with the mayor and was informed that this issue was resolved and Verba was given a written warning. There was no investigation. Nineteen workers were there and were berated and swore at, and they were not interviewed. How does a thorough investigation without seeking all the facts of the event? It seems like the fix was in from the start. The message of you that you're sending these workers just because they're garbage men, that they don't matter, just because they're garbage men, they're being treated like trash. Mayor, you were at the service garage a few days after being advised of this. Did you ask any of the workers about this? The city personnel manual states that persons alleging harassment will be asked to complete a written statement outlining the nature of the complaint. You actually have a form for it. It's Form 12.29. Was this done? The form asks for a list of witnesses. Was that gathered? Step 3 states the investigation of the complaint will normally include conferring with the parties involved and any names of, any named witnesses or apparent witnesses. Once again, there were nineteen workers present when this happened. None were interviewed. By not doing the right thing, doing this the right way, you're failing the workers and setting a terrible example. If I was to repeat the words that John Verba used to his workers in this council chamber, he'd be throwing cuffs on me and dragging me out of here. I'd be arrested for disorderly conduct. I think it's just, it's terrible that you guys are allowing the workers to go through this. Next, I'd like to know what the status of the hiring of the firefighters is. This past weekend, there was three firefighters forced over each shift. That's more than $3,500 in overtime in a weekend. A month ago, it stated the background checks were being conducted and interviews were being set up. I'd like to know if that's being done because the members of Brooklyn Fire Department can't wait any longer. Lastly, I love the Brooklyn Police Department. I was a member of it. I think they're doing a great job with, and the best they can to keep us safe. The police chief, like he does yearly, submitted his 2022 annual report. These numbers and increases are from 2021 to 2022. Animal control calls, 564, up 5%. Eighty-eight of them were wildlife calls. Total police calls for service, 30,863, up 14%. Assault, up 81%. Theft, up 28%. Auto theft, up 83%. Value of stolen property, up 34%. Value of stolen autos, up 72%. Since 2020, auto theft is up 212%. Since 2019, values of stolen autos is up 440%. Yet, we sit here and we have a councilman who's not here tonight, and he spoke about a wonderful discussion he had with the chief about statistics, and the only thing we have to worry about is some broken windows and a couple stolen cars. It sure seems like council, the administration, and the directors are not on the same page. In the ordinance for the cameras, it states that there will be a fine of $500 for noncompliance. It goes on to say, "In addition to the foregoing, the violations of any provision of the charter shall be and hereby declared to be a public nuisance and contrary to public interest and shall be at the discretion of the city to create a cause of action for injunctive relief." Now, the police department in 2022 was at Walmart 712 times. Does the city have a plan for any kind of labeling or declaring Walmart as a public nuisance? And I know that the officers of BPD are working hard, protect us. Now is the time that we give them what they need while things get worse. Please send the message to the members of the Brooklyn Police Department, Fire Department, and Service Garage that they matter.
Good evening, everyone. Victor Ardito, 7439 Outlook Avenue. I brought this up last year and bring it again. Down in the park, over that way, you have the big bridge, the cement bridge. And last year during the cleanup, I noticed the beginning, there's a conduit, two, is it two conduits? Electrical conduits, quite large. They're broken loose last year, and they're still broken loose, and I think they might be broken loose a little more. So, are we going to wait till it breaks and we got electrical, big electrical problem there? Or are those electrical conduits empty? I'm guessing they're not. And the same thing, I've asked more than a couple of years. We have a tar machine in the city of Brooklyn for filling the cracks. I know there's not a lot of traffic in the park back there, but there's a whole lot of cracks could be tarred unless they're going to tear that roadway up very shortly. And to tar the cracks, it'll last longer, and I don't think it's a two-week job in there, blowing it out and burning the weeds to tire it. But it's only my opinion. Thank you. Have a nice evening.
Hi. My name is Michael Kanceler. I'm here on behalf of 4302 South Parkside Drive. I represent Mr. and Mrs. Brown on the sale of this property. I'll be exceptionally brief, but I did want to thank council for their consideration this evening on authorizing Mayor Van Kirk to purchase the property. We are ready, willing, and able to work together on this mutually beneficial arrangement. We hope we can play a small part in the future of the great city of Brooklyn. Thank you.
We will now have reports of committees. Oh, I'm sorry.
Good evening. I'm Liz Dregney, 4201 Don Cliff Drive. Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak before you today. So much discussion has been had about tornado sirens, and I hope that you won't mind if I bring it up again. Not all of it has been nice, and I noted particularly a previous council meeting in which someone was angry that the new city hall would have the gall to build a shelter or a basement. And I think that the problem here is that it's, it's, there's a lot of drawbacks to the siren. The average cost to update maintenance tornado siren is over $60,000, and that doesn't even include the cost to maintain it. The other drawback to tornado sirens is that they're only good for tornado warnings. So if you have other things that are going on, like the recent chemical spill, they really have no other value as a notification tool. And unfortunately, there's a feeling in our community that city council is ignoring an important aspect of safety to our community. And maybe it's not the city's responsibility, but the average Brooklyn resident still feels anxiety that they might not know if a tornado is headed our way. If the sirens will not be replaced, we need to know what other options and opportunities exist for us. So I have done some research and found four ways to keep our residents informed about not just tornado warnings, but other emergency events such as severe thunderstorm warnings, Amber Alerts, and FIBA messages as well. Some options are free if you already own a cell phone, but for some residents who do not, there are some very low-cost options that I believe city council might want to look into to make sure that even our lowest-income residents can feel safe. No-cost options include Ready Notify by Cuyahoga County. It is a mass notification system used by the county, participating municipalities to issue emergency notifications to the public. It's primarily used for emergency notifications when rapid and accurate information is essential for your immediate safety. Participation in the system is voluntary. You need a valid email and any phone number, even a landline, to sign up. One advantage is that you will get information about your emergencies in your primary language, and if you require any special assistance during an event, you could put that on there as well. And I have an information sheet from the county for everyone here tonight. WEAs, Wireless Emergency Alerts, these are already on a resident's cell phone. It's already part of it, whether you have an iPhone, Android, or Pixel phone. All you need to do is enable your phone to do this. In the event of emergency, it will send you text messages on every mobile device in our area. You do have to double-check your phone and make sure that this is turned on, and you can get information on the internet or from your provider if you need help. WEAs look like text messages, but they're designed to get your attention with a unique sound and a vibration that's repeated twice, and it's, again, free of charge. Keep in mind that some mobile service providers call these messages like government alerts or emergency alerts. The Federal Emergency Management Agency, which we all know as FEMA, has an app. The FEMA app allows you to receive real-time weather and emergency alerts, send notifications to your loved ones, locate emergency shelters in your area, and so much more. It is available for free from Google Play or the App Store. There is another option that does cost money, and it's from NOAA, which is a weather radio. And there is one type of weather radio called All Hazards, and in addition to being a clock that sits on your countertop, it also broadcasts warnings as well for other types of hazards like thunderstorms and earthquakes and chemical spills, oil spills. It works 24 hours a day, seven days a week. The service is available to national, state, and local emergency managers to disseminate information, and it gets everything from the National Emergency Alert System, which everyone knows already. I've taken the initiative to purchase a low-cost weather radio of this type. I found it very simple to understand and set up. The cost for this unit is $25. Ohio's official tornado season starts June, and I would like to volunteer to give a full presentation to city council, recommend we make this information available in the quarterly bulletin that goes to all the Brooklyn residents, and ask city council to consider subsidizing a weather radio of this type for any low-income resident that has no other way to receive this information so that all Brooklyn residents can stay informed and feel safe. Thank you.
Anybody else for public session? Okay. We will move on with reports of committees, commissions, and boards. We will start this evening with the Planning Commission, Councilwoman Sue Grodick.
Thank you. The Planning Commission met on February 1 to consider a request from Fast Signs and Jealousy Auto Detailing for a sign package for auto detailing at 7323 Clinton Road. It was approved contingent on the Board of Zoning Appeals' approval and the removal of a full frame and sign on the east side of the building. That was the only item on our agenda, and our next meeting will be March 1 at 6:00 p.m. And also, just to let everybody know, that the business has already moved the full frame and the sign on the east side of the building. They did that within 24 hours. And that ends my planning commission report.
Thank you. Next up, we have the Domestic Abuse Commission. Governor DeWine has included the full request of $20 million from the Ohio Domestic Abuse Network for domestic violence programs in his 2024-25 budget. This still needs to be passed by the General Assembly, who has the final say in the state budget. The O-D-A-N does thank Governor DeWine for supporting their efforts to increase services for survivors. And the Brooklyn Domestic Abuse Commission will be meeting on Thursday, February 23 at 6:00 p.m. at the Brooklyn Library Community Room. We will have a guest speaker from the Journey Center to speak about healthy teenage relationships. I have help from Brooklyn School Board member Kelly Crawl and Key Club Advisory, Ms. Kramer, to get the word out to teenagers attending Brooklyn High School. This forum will also be important for parents of teens to attend, as our guest speaker will have helpful information for both teens and parents of teenagers. Hope to see you next week, Thursday. Next up, we have the Board of Zoning Appeals, Councilwoman Sue Grodick.
The Board of Zoning Appeals will meet on February 16 at 6:00 p.m. to hear a request from Fast Signs and Jealousy Auto Detailing for a variance of three extra signs to the allowable of one on the building face for signage for the business. And again, the address is 7323 Clinton Road. And that ends the zoning, the Board of Zoning Appeals' report.
Next up, we have the Recreation Board, Councilman Tansky.
Thank you. Next Recreation Board meeting will be held on Tuesday, February 21, in the Rec Center Meeting Room, 7:00 p.m. May I conclude, sir?
Thank you. Next up, we have Public Safety and Environmental Committee, Councilwoman Sue Grodick.
The Public Safety and Environmental Committee met on January 30. We had two ordinances that we were discussing. After a discussion, the committee voted to recommend to council for approval Ordinance 2022-32 in Acting Chapter 765 Apartment Complex Security of the codified ordinances of the city of Brooklyn. After a discussion with Councilman Barowski, he is the sponsor of Ordinance 2022-44, amending Section 505.08 Certain Animals Prohibited, and enacting Section 505.27 Restrictions on Keeping Chickens of the codified ordinances of the city of Brooklyn to regulate the keeping of chickens. The committee recommends tabling this ordinance with no further action. At the meeting, Councilman Barowski submitted a draft substitute ordinance to discuss with the committee, council, administration that was in attendance, and also the public. He may choose to bring forward a substitute ordinance as a form of new legislation. And that ends my report.
Thank you. And finally, under committee reports, we have committee of the whole. The committee, the whole, meets directly before all regularly scheduled council meetings at 6:15 in council chambers. Tonight, we had two guest speakers, the first being Jason Noldy and Robin from the City Center Project to discuss the progress and some change orders that are on tonight's agenda under Resolution 2023-4. The 10 potential change orders include $162,794 not to exceed in additional dollars for the City Center Project. This includes some lighting controls, extra landscaping along Brookway where the trailer for the project currently stands at the corner of Memphis and Brookway, and other technical building work that needs to be done for the city hall to function. The full list of changes and current costs is available to the public at the, on the board docs. The second speaker was Mike Henry from our new city engineer from Chagrin Valley Engineering. He discussed a few different items tonight regarding moving the monuments and plaques where, that are currently in the parking lot when you pull into the memorial park or the current city hall, to where the plane is located on the corner of South Parkside and Memphis Avenue. And this little new and upgraded park will include a sidewalk around the existing property in a little figure eight, add some trees, and relocate those monuments under the trees in addition to some flagpoles and lighting that will be there as well. The Brook Park Road project, he discussed that the bids went out, and they were approximately $1.3 million over the state of Ohio engineer estimate. So this means that the city of Brooklyn will have an added cost of approximately $300,000. Cleveland, Parma, and Brooklyn Heights are already on board, and this will be a four-phase project over a total of, I believe he had said, two, two years for the entire Brook Park Road from, do you know the exact street? Was 130th to?
I-480.
I-480 interchange. Thank you.
In Brooklyn Heights.
And he also discussed Ordinance 2023-5, giving us some information regarding the fees schedule update, and the fees will be changed to depend on the size of the project and be paid upfront, and this will be a cleaner process for the finance department and the audit, and will help alleviate some of the administrative burden that is currently in place with our current practices. And then we also did discuss legislation for Ordinance 2022-32 regarding the apartment complex lighting and security. It was recommended to go back to the Public Safety Committee, which we are hoping to hold before the next regularly scheduled council meeting. Ordinance 2022-44 regarding chickens was recommended to be tabled. And all other ordinances on tonight's agenda were recommended to be adopted, which are on either third reading or first reading, but requesting suspension of the rules and adopted tonight. And I'll give more background on each of those individual ordinances when they're read into the record and before they are voted on. And that ends our committees, commissions, and boards. We now have council reports, and we begin this evening with Councilwoman Pucci.
Thank you. Good evening. Last week, I heard some very sad news that George Poprad passed away. Mr. Poprad was a longtime resident of our city. He was very involved, including he stepped up at a time when his leadership was really needed. I believe he served on the Financial Oversight Committee for the schools, and then later ran for school board. And really was devoted to turning some things around and making a positive difference at that time, and he did. But most importantly, George was a devoted husband, a loving father, grandfather, son, and brother, so please keep his family in your prayers. I have a report from the Brooklyn Community Improvement Corporation. We did have our annual meeting on February 6 at 5:30. We approved our minutes of the previous annual meeting, which was February 7, 2022. We had an election of trustees. We had a vacancy of a trustee position because former councilwoman Debbie Tomusko, who was serving in a citizen capacity, passed away. So Mayor Ron Van Kirk was elected to that vacancy, and I was elected to another three-year term. We then had election of officers. Mr. Ron Van, I'm sorry, Mayor Ron Van Kirk is the chair. I am the secretary, and member John Witten is the treasurer. We also approved our 2022 financial statement. Once again, I'd like to thank the Charter Review Commission, who met earlier this evening. As they begin this very important work, I think they're really off to a great start. And also, thank you to Law Director Butler for providing them with a solid foundation of information that will be necessary in this important work. Mr. Barowski isn't here this evening, so I will let everyone know that the next meeting of the school board is Tuesday, February 21 at 6:00 p.m. in Room 173 in the high school. I'd also like to thank all who spoke this evening. Mr. Ardito, I do remember when you mentioned that about the conduit. Mayor, if we could have someone from the service department take a look at that, and also if there's anything we plan on doing about the cracks back in the park. Thank you to Mr. Kanceleri for speaking on behalf of longtime residents, Mr. and Mrs. Brown. And Ms. Dregney, about the tornado sirens and the weather radios, the weather radios are a really great idea for people who don't have access. I had made a suggestion to the previous administration when we were talking about this, that we maybe just get an initial supply, have them available at the senior center for people, and kind of gauge, is this something that people really need? And if we do determine that we have a need in the community for that, that we could direct some of our grant monies that we get, like, for example, we always get money for our smoke detectors and things like that. But I think, you know, in my opinion, I think it would be good to just get an initial supply. They're not that much money. We have one at our house, and they're not that much, so I think that would be a good way to gauge the need in the community. Let's see. And regarding what Mr. Slattery mentioned, before the last council meeting, I had heard a rumor that an employee filed a complaint, and I checked with our law director. He hadn't heard anything at that point. And I also heard a rumor last week that the matter was resolved and that there were some concerns that perhaps there wasn't a thorough investigation done. I did reach out to our law director and our HR consultant and asked for some information. I just received that information today. I do have some questions, and I look forward to discussing it further with Mr. Butler. I want to be clear that I value all of our employees, and they all deserve to be treated with respect and to work in an environment that is free from favoritism, threats, and retaliation. Thank you.
Next up, Councilman Tansky.
Thank you. Police chief, on the list that we have from the Civil Service Commission, taking the test, correct?
Not sure if I follow what you're asking.
The police test and hiring more policemen?
There's an upcoming test that'll be announced after Civil Service meets Wednesday.
After that test, will we be putting a couple of police officers on? Is that our intent down the line?
Yes.
Fire Department, the three that we were hiring, I don't know if this is going to go to council president? president, Meg Ryan, or mayor. We are in process of putting those three firemen on, correct?
Yes.
All right, so that takes care of those two. Second thing, service department. I heard the matter was also set. Two things that I want to know. Mr. Butler, has the union contacted you for any labor management upcoming meetings?
Uh, no. We do have an upcoming meeting, though.
You have an upcoming meeting?
Yeah, they didn't contact me.
They didn't contact you, not on the situation that's going on, just an upcoming meeting, correct?
We scheduled a labor management meeting.
Labor management meeting, so it's in, okay.
That's right.
Second thing, has there any been, any grievances filed by the union or any employee on the situation that went on?
Not that I'm aware of.
So there wasn't? Also, on the weather radios, I think it's a great idea. I think something that we need to look into, I agree with Councilwoman Pucci brought up. And that concludes my report.
Councilwoman Sue Grotick.
Oh, thank you. First, I'd like to wish condolences to the Poprad family and Susanna. This is my first hearing of it. George was a great guy, and we were sad when he moved out of Brooklyn with the Poprad family. And I'm really sad about that, and kind of taken aback, because George always seemed had such a high energy level. So I wish the best to his family. Also, I greatly appreciate all of the public comments that we had today. And Liz, thank you very much for your information. I hope to include this in the safety meeting, so I hope you won't mind if I reach out to you. You know, I'd forgotten about the radio, and that was something that we talked about. So thank you very much for bringing the information for residents, but also bringing that back up to our attention. And I think before we roll into another tornado season, which I always remind my second-grade students that I've lived in the Cleveland area a long time, and we've never had a real tornado come through the area very closely, but we do need to practice and be ready for one. So I think this is good timing, and thank you for that. And tomorrow is Valentine's Day. As a second-grade teacher, I look at Valentine's Day as a day of friendship and kindness. And so I would challenge you, even if you're watching this meeting after Valentine's Day, to be a little bit kinder to those that are around you. If you have a neighbor that lives by themselves, maybe take a moment to reach out to someone, maybe call a family member that you know may be a little bit lonely this week, and spread a little bit of friendship and kindness along the way. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilman Coyle.
Good evening. Thank you to everyone from the public who spoke this evening. Liz, I too love the idea of the weather alert radios being available for residents, and thank you for bringing it up to the meeting. Thank you to those who attended the Public Safety and Environmental Committee meeting two weeks ago. There was a decent crowd and lengthy discussion on both ordinances that were on the agenda. It was great to hear both points of view and the many suggestions from residents and fellow committee and council members. Week and a half ago, I had the opportunity to tour the new city hall building. I know there have been a lot of uncontrollable construction delays, but the various rooms and offices are really starting to take shape with paint and carpet being installed. I know furniture is on order on the way. As a former member of the planning commission, it was one thing to see the designs on paper, but to see them being brought to life was simply amazing. And lastly, last week, I spent a lot of time across the street at the rec center, specifically in the ice rink for the Greater Cleveland High School Hockey League's Baron Cup Tournament. I've been in quite a few rinks over the years, and ours is one of the best for viewing a game. Congratulations to all the local teams who participated, and the employees at the rec center definitely deserve some recognition as well, as they all did a fantastic job, as always, making our cities shine bright when we host events like these. It's not over for that just yet, as this week starts the Ohio High School Athletic Association State sectional hockey tournament. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilman Seltzer.
Thank you. The Brooklyn Drama Club and Music Department will be forming the Musical Sister Act for their annual production this year. There's going to be a special presentation for Brooklyn seniors on March 23 at 10:00 a.m. Coffee and donuts will be served beginning at 9:00 a.m. If you wish to attend, please RSVP by March 20 to laura.baker@BCSHurricanes.org, or call The full productions will be shown that Thursday, Friday, and Saturday at 7:00 p.m., and on Saturday, there'll also be an afternoon matinee. This week, First Energy should begin to do the complete conversion of city streetlights to LED. The first section will be around Ridge Park Square. This will start with consisting of the streets east of Ridge from Delora to Bit Off. The next section will be the streets west of Ridge from Glenholm to North Cliff, and then head into Idlewood. We may finally have some progress following in getting a recycling taken to a facility closer than the current one in Twinsburg. We're working with Jeff Snyder from Rumkey on a solution. Actually, I met Mr. Snyder when he was doing a presentation for Keep Ohio Beautiful down at Mohican Lodge last November. And also, talking about Keep Ohio Beautiful, we're going to be working with them at the end of March, and probably more likely in, somewhere in May, not May, April, I'm sorry. Where Keep Ohio Beautiful and Keep in Brooklyn Beautiful will be planting trees at I-480 Tiedemann ramps with volunteers from Medical Mutual. A big thank you to Medical Mutual for their donation of this project. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. I have just, two things to add. One is, I too was able to do a tour of the new city hall building. It was my first time going through there. I went with Councilman Seltzer, it's Mary Jo, and Bob earlier today, and like Stephen said, it was a lot of fun seeing those drawings really come to life in the new building, and I look forward to being over there later this year. And I do also want to give a shout out to Joanne at the rec center. I took today off of work and decided to do her deep-water cardio class that she teaches, and I had quite the workout, and made some new workout friends, and really had a fun time at the class. And it's been a while since I've been to our rec center, and I literally walked over there. My husband and I, when we moved here, said we would be there all the time, and, you know, there's, sometimes you go stay on routine, and sometimes you don't. So I'm hoping to get back into the routine. So if you're like me, and it's been a while since you've been at the rec center, I do encourage you to check out their programming. And Bonnie at the front desk was really nice in helping me to get registered with an account and make sure I knew what to do for the check-in process and get a new card and everything. So definitely check it out, see their classes. They have them either on the Brooklyn Recreation Facebook page, or you can go to the Brooklyn Rec Center site, either from the brooklynohio.gov page and click on Recreation, or go right to their website at brooklynohymirec.com. So that ends my report today. We will move on with the mayor's report. Mayor Van, Ron Van Kirk.
Thank you, Council President. Appreciate it, that's okay. Several items, since we didn't get to cover them, and may the whole so forgive me, it's rather lengthy. The first item is the bid request for the water remediation at the fire station. Those are currently being drawn up by Jason Noldy at GPD, and we should expect those in the next week or two for them to go out to bid, and then hopefully to get that work done at the fire station sometime early to mid-spring. Mr. Tansky already mentioned the firefighters, that Chief Polly is working through that process. It's a long process, but he is working on that process to hire those three additional firefighters that council approved in the budget last, for this year. Memorial Plaza has already been mentioned. If council approves the purchase of the house tonight, that will be a part of that. Mr. Henry did not discuss this, but many, much of the cost of this project will be the moving of those items. In fact, a very large percentage of that cost, and those costs will be able to be included in the site demolition of this property and in making way for the new library. Of course, we don't have numbers yet, but we'll be able to share those with you. But a lot of that, that's a lot of what that cost is. Mostly, what we'll be paying for is the sidewalk, grass, trees, things like that, but the movement of it will be able to be included in our demolition grant dollars, so that's, that's a good thing. As Ben mentioned a couple of times, April 14 is still the tentative completion date from Panzico. We've already set a timeline of events that will lead up to that in regards to moving city hall, moving the police station, setting up an auction for the items here in city hall, as well as getting Memorial Plaza moved. And so that date has, April 14 has been that way for the last four weeks, and so we kind of went off of that to schedule things we obviously have to schedule, movers and all those other things. And so hopefully, we'll see that come to fruition. On the Nowaka program, that for the timing of the lights on Ridge Road, Chief Melkey informed us this last week, that's been completed, and they will be monitoring that over the next coming days and making adjustments accordingly. So that's been a several-month project, if not longer, the next several weeks, sorry, over that. And so hopefully, we'll see some improvement in that area just in time for work construction to go on over there. But we are glad to have that done. And working with Mr. Seltzer, First Energy is continuing to install the balance of the new LED lights. They should be starting sometime this week or early next week in replacing the old fixtures with the new LED fixtures, and they will start in the Ridge Park Square area. We have requested that they start on the eastern side of the city and move west. As they do that, we can't really control that, but that's what we've requested. So a big shout out to Andy. This has been a two-year project that he's been working on with First Energy, and I think we're finally starting to see some light at the end of the tunnel. There was a pun intended there. All right. Jack and the rec department should be getting the results from the recreation survey that we partnered with Kent State with this week. There's been a tremendous response to that survey, and we had well over 2,000 responses to that survey, and so we should be getting the results this week. And of course, once we have those, we will share them with council and then move forward with the recommendations if council chooses from that survey. In regards to the building commissioner position, there have been two people that have applied for the position. We're working with the city of Bedford and setting up schedules to interview both of them. And of course, once we have those set up, council will send the resumes on to you. And of course, obviously, you guys will have a chance to interview people as well, once we move forward with that. It's a little bit different working with another city with this, but Bedford's been great to work with thus far. I did meet with Tracy Struble and Scott Morgan from the library this afternoon, and she walked me through their plans, everything that's moving forward. They're eager to get moving on this project, but they also understand the delays that we've been experiencing, and the R-City Center done. I did get some good news from Ken Kinlan today from the county land bank. The grant for the funding to tear this building down and to move Memorial Park was supposed to expire at the end of April. The state has approved an extension of that until June of 2024. Right, so we will get the final paperwork on that. It won't take that long, right, for us to get that done, hopefully, right? But we did get that extension. This is not a problem that is just a Brooklyn, it's across the entire state. Mr. Henry already mentioned the Brook Park Road. Andy mentioned, Mr. Seltzer's mentioned the partnership with Rumkey. We are actually trying to get to form a partnership with Cleveland again, and Rumkey is their provider for the recycling. It's very difficult getting hold of the right person in Cleveland, so we're working directly with Rumkey. We'd like to just take it to the Ridge Road Transfer Station like we used to do it. We can't do that until we have Cleveland on board. However, in speaking with Mr. Schneider from Rumkey, they have a location that's much closer than where we're going now, so we're trying to work with them to see if we can get something arranged to be able to take it there at least, until we're able to get something with the city of Cleveland, if we can. Couple weeks ago, we had a meeting of the First Room Suburbance Consortium with the mayors and managers in that city. They went over a presentation for the property tax reappraisals that will take place next year. We've already scheduled the county to come out in our final meeting in June to present that to council and to the residents, that's already on the books, to kind of let residents know what to expect and how that will affect the appraisals for their property. There are a couple of job fairs that are coming up. The city of Cleveland Job Fair will take place on Friday, February 24, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at 1910 Carnegie Avenue in Cleveland. There, and so that will be from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. again at 1910 our Carnegie Avenue in Cleveland. They're currently looking for airport maintenance workers, airport, airport terminal operations agents, and field maintenance workers as long as custodial work. Then a second one will be take place on Thursday, February 23, at the Garfield Heights Civic Center from 4:30 to 6:30 p.m., and they're hiring, there's a whole slew of people that will be there, and so both of those are put on by the Ohio Means Jobs with the county. Thank you, Mr. Kessler for, I think it's Kessler, I think I don't, I didn't quite get your name, but being here for the South Park side, hopefully, I agree, hopefully council approves that this evening, so we can add that to our project. And Mr. Ardito and Mrs. Pucci, I will look into both of those things that he mentioned. And Liz, I will also look into the tornado things as well, I think that's a good idea. I think the dollars may be better spent in that as well, so thank you for bringing that to our attention. In regards to matters of personnel, as I told Mr. Slattery on the phone when I spoke to him last week, those are not for public discussion. It's not appropriate to do so. Mrs. Pucci made mention that she cares for all of our employees, as do I. I've made a very concerted effort since I've been mayor to schedule lunches with each of departments to have lunch, to get to know them, and of course, we are working through those as I've come on site here. But obviously, I care very much for all of our employees, I'm very grateful for that. I've said that numerous times when I was on council and continue to feel that way. And I believe it's all I have, so thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, may I ask a question about one of the items?
Sure.
About, and I don't know if this is for the chief, about the Ridge Road traffic lights. I had mentioned asking you to look into what Independence has, where if you're traveling, if, in our city, it would be.
Right, that was, I know exactly where you're talking about. I even drove by myself.
Okay.
So you can turn left on red.
If there's no upcoming traffic, if you're going out.
That wasn't part of, that wasn't initially part of the scope of the project. This project started back in 2018. But I did bring it up to the traffic engineers, and they were going to take it into consideration. I asked them to take a look at a few other lights, and they weren't touched either.
Okay. And I understand that, you know, we still have more construction and everything to go on, that, you know, that's not over. But if we could, like, even find out how much it would be, like, maybe that's something we could do.
I think you'd have to do a traffic study.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I believe we do have one director report. Director Ragus, you have a report? You do not? Okay. Makes it easy. We are on with legislation. Under Old Business, we have ordinance 2022-32, which is on second reading tonight, enacting Chapter 765 Apartment Complex Security of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Brooklyn.
Move to defer to the safety committee?
Certainly.
To defer to safety committee, Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Sue Grotick?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki?
Yes.
Stephen Coyle?
Yes.
Andy Seltzer.
Yes.
Ordinance 2022-44 is on second reading tonight, amending Section 505.08, Certain Animals Prohibited, and enacting Section 505.27, Restrictions on Keeping of Chickens of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Brooklyn to Regulate the Keeping of Chickens.
Move to table this ordinance?
Certainly.
To table, Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Sue Grotick?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki?
Yes.
Stephen Coyle?
Yes.
Andy Seltzer.
Yes.
Ordinance 2023-2 is on third reading tonight, not for adoption, authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the Cuyahoga County Public Library for the sale of certain real property known as a portion of 7619 Memphis Avenue, permanent parcel 432-24-0009, known further as the city hall site for the construction of a library. Just a little bit more details on this ordinance. This is a selling of the current city hall site to the library, Cuyahoga County Public Library, for a dollar. If the library does leave this location years from now, it's similar to the transition of the school, where the library currently is, where it goes back to the school board. And also a note to residents, that the Cuyahoga County Public Library system will be paying for the new building of their new branch, so city dollars are not used for that new building.
Move to adopt?
To adopt, Kathy Pucci?
I'm going to abstain because I do work for the library system.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Sue Grotick?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki?
Yes.
Stephen Coyle?
Yes.
Yep. Yes.
Oh, Andy Seltzer.
Yes.
I just wrote an M for motion. Ordinance 2023-4 is up for third reading and adoption tonight, amending Section 121.02 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Brooklyn by amending various council rules, various rules of council. And the big change in this ordinance is splitting public session into two separate sections. At the start of council meetings, where a public session currently is, members will be able to speak for five minutes on agenda items only. At the end of council meetings... At the end of council meetings, after we vote on legislation, members of the public will be able to speak for five minutes on anything related to the good and welfare of the city of Brooklyn. Make a motion to adopt?
Second.
To adopt? Kathy Pucci?
I'm voting no, and that is because I'm not in favor of restricting what the public is able to speak to us in the public session in the beginning of the meeting.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Sue Grotick?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki?
Yes.
Stephen Coyle?
Yes.
Andy Seltzer?
Yes.
Under New Business tonight is Resolution 2023-2 is on first reading, but administration is looking to adopt with suspension of the rules, authorizing all actions necessary to accept Northeast Ohio Public Energy Council, NOPEC, 2023 Energize Community Grants. And this grant is worth $28,122 and will go towards the lighting costs in either Memorial Park or Markard Park. And due to the timing, the administration is looking for the passing tonight.
Can you recognize?
Yes. Thank you.
So we have to get this grant filed with the NOPEC, so that's why we're asking for suspension of the rules.
Introduce by all, suspend the rules.
Second. To suspend the rules. Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Sue Grotick?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki?
Yes.
Stephen Coyle?
Yes.
Andy Seltzer?
Yes.
To adopt? Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Sue Grotick?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki?
Yes.
Stephen Coyle?
Yes.
Andy Seltzer?
Yes.
Resolution 2023-3 is on first reading, but looking to suspend tonight through suspension of the, looking to adopt tonight through suspension of the rules, authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Sonia A. Brown for the purpose of certain real property known as 4302 South Parkside Drive, permanent parcel 432-25-112. And this is the property that's been mentioned several times tonight at the corner of Memphis Avenue and South Parkside Drive, next to the airplane. And by purchasing this property, the city will have more room for this new veterans memorial that is being moved from the entrance of our city hall to the corner near where the airplane currently stands. Yeah.
Two things. One, we had the property appraised at a price of $135,000, so that is what we will be offering for this property. Also, the property is still for sale, so obviously timing is an issue here for everybody to operate with. We're asking for suspension of the rules.
Introduce by all, suspend the rules.
Certainly.
To suspend the rules. Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Sue Grotick?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki?
Yes.
Stephen Coyle?
Yes.
Andy Seltzer?
Sorry, I recognize one last time.
Yes.
Additionally, the house that's sitting on the property will be torn down as part of this and the county land bank will be covering those costs.
Thank you. Resolution 2023-4 is on first reading, looking to adopt through suspension of the rules, amending Resolution 2022-47 Approving of a Construction Budget and Authorizing Execution of Guaranteed Maximum Price Amendments for the City Center Project and Declaring an Emergency. And this was also discussed a couple of times tonight. This includes the 162,794 of not to exceed additional potential change orders to the city center project.
Can you recognize?
Yes.
As Mr. Nodi mentioned in the committee, the whole meeting, we're nearing the end of this process and so we're trying to get these approved so that we can get this project done. We do anticipate that this number will fall based upon these PCOS, but we, this is, it's a not to exceed amount. And of course, we will keep council apprised of any changes that are made to these PCOS, whatever we know them.
Introduce by all, suspend the rules.
Certainly.
To suspend the rules. Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Sue Grotick?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki?
Yes.
Stephen Coyle?
Yes.
Andy Seltzer?
Yes.
To adopt? Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Sue Grotick?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki?
Yes.
Stephen Coyle?
Yes.
Andy Seltzer?
Yes.
Resolution 2023-5 is on first reading, looking to adopt tonight, authorizing the mayor of the city of Brooklyn, Ohio, to pay 2023 wages in accordance with the Wage Reopener Language in the 2021 to 2023 Collective Bargaining Agreement with the Labor's Local 860 with Labor's International Union of North America. And this wage reopener is approving a 3% wage increase, which is on par with what AFSMI, the AFSMI agreement we passed last October and the police fact finding that we approved earlier this year.
Can you recognize?
Yes.
Again, we're asking for suspension of the rules. I believe, is it seven days, Mr. Butler, that we have to act on this? On this, the union contract? I believe it's seven days.
Yeah, it's seven, that's right.
Seven days. So obviously, we have such much more time between now and our next meeting, so that's why we're asking for suspension of the rules.
Thank you. Introduce by all, to suspend the rules.
Certainly.